I'll never get used to that. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 22. This city council meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. And with that, I will turn it over to Krista and for the roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Kukul. Councilmember Soltes. Councilmember Herjehhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista, and if everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. And with that, approval of agenda, Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Sean and seconded by Jennifer to approve the agenda as posted. We'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the agenda as posted. We do not have any public communication tonight. So this will be our first of two public comment periods. This is the time to speak about anything on the agenda or anything that you'd like to bring forward to the council. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW 42 dot 17A dot 555. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including this audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. With that, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address the council tonight? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our council meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Christina and seconded by Beth to approve the consent agenda consisting of items C1 and C2. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Next up is reports of our commissions. And first up will be Arts Commission, Marita. I see you are here. Welcome tonight. Welcome, Marita. The floor is yours. You were on me. Oh, there you are. Welcome.
Right here. Okay. Hi, everybody. This is the fastest I've ever been up. This is amazing. Wow. Good evening. Okay, so my name is Marita Ledesma with the Arts Commission. And during our June meeting, I'm going to be kind of looking at the minutes here because I was out of town. So Patty, my vice chair, took over, which was fabulous. We talked, they talked about the virtual art show, which I am happy to announce, although I'm sure you're aware, is finally live. We finally got all the rules and regs and everything done, and it is live and up, so that's exciting. If you guys haven't seen the post on Facebook, please go on and share it out onto your personal channels. We'd love to get the word out as much as possible. The rotating art hall was discussed. We're meeting with the engineering services so that we can get all the specs wrapped up and in the call for that piece of art or those two pieces of art. And then the utility box wrap was discussed. The, I did have an opportunity to join the meeting for the partnership, the Equity Commission last month. And this month during their meeting, they will be discussing, assisting the Arts Commission with a description for the theme of our next utility box wrap call so that we can utilize their acumen and their expertise in the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Department so that we get all of the verbiage correct and appropriate. So we're looking forward to that partnership with them. And then apparently election of officers took place, that I was nominated and voted in again as chair. How it goes when you're not there. And then Patty is also reprising her role as the vice chair and Jessica is also staying in the secretary. And she, they've been fabulous at those positions, so that's exciting as well. And then in terms of other meetings that we had outside of the commission meeting, Patty and Pat and I met last Thursday to discuss developing a work plan. And that was discussed a little bit during the commission meeting as well. But we're going to use the work plan that I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, that the Parks Department uses or the Parks Commission uses and kind of emulate that to formalize all the work that we have on our plate and that we hope to execute in the future. And then Patty and I also had talked with Pat about putting together a small retreat for the commission so that we can, I realize that we've been a little bit remiss on doing those since I came on board and what we wanted that to look like. So Patty and I are going to be getting together here this coming week to then start fleshing some of those things out before we bring them back to Pat and back to the rest of the commission. And I believe that is the extent of my report unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Marita. Does any council member have any questions for Marita about the Arts Commission? All right. Thank you for coming tonight, Marita, and giving a great update. We really appreciate it. And please, I know I sound like a broken record, but I really appreciate everything that your commissioners do on your team. And please pass on our thanks.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have a report from CEDIS tonight. Next is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Bronwyn, are you giving the update tonight on that commission or somebody else?
Hello.
Hi, Bronwyn.
Hi.
Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Sorry about that. There I am. Yes, I will be giving the report tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Bronwyn and I am from the Social Justice Commission, just shortening the name. And we have really been working hard on getting our agenda together and getting the ball rolling. There's just been a lot of discussions, so we don't have anything hard, any hard facts. We know that we are going to be looking at finally making some goals, short-term, long-term goals, and really focusing, kind of focus in on that. I was just named, I had been vice chair, and our chair had to step down because she's decided to pursue higher education. What gives with that? But she's going to be doing that, so I'm going to be doing this for now and hoping that we can just get the ball rolling.
Great. Thank you, Bronwyn. Does council have any questions for Bronwyn? Well, Bronwyn, thank you very much. Congratulations on becoming the chair or is it interim chair?
I am the chair.
Well, good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing from you each month, and please pass on our thanks to all of your team on the commission.
I will do that. Thanks for having me. Have a great night and good meeting.
You too. Thank you, Bronwyn. Next up is our Human Services Commission, Debbie Jacobson. Welcome. Welcome, Debbie.
Hi there. How are you this evening?
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight.
It's really nice of you all to give up your sunny evening to serve the community. So you can hear me, can't you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, short and sweet, the Human Services Commission's been working on coming to a formal recommendation for how to use House Bill 1590 funds. It's been a great process and this last meeting, what we did is we basically created a workshop and created a list of all the things that we know. We did a collective list of relevant issues that we've learned through the Human Service Commission, through our visits with the police chief and sergeant as guest visitors, the city finance staff, grant applications, our time spent and surveys collected in the Polaris apartment community, the Covington resident survey that the commission led this last winter, and information gathered from other cities. So we took collective information, created a great list of the things that we know and where those pressing issues are for the residents of the community. Then we looked at potential options for using the funds and just a single focal point with high impact or multiple meaningful investments in city-oriented, specific city of Covington locations and other programs within the local area where they have services that provide support to our residents. Sorry, I have some background distraction here. It's really getting to me here. So anyway, then our last thing is support why we might choose one option over the other. So we basically just brainstormed these lists and are cultivating them. So the next meeting is when we're going to take those notes and come to a formal vote on how we're going to recommend the funds be used. We will include that list of how we came to that conclusion and with the support for that so you can see what the options were that we saw and how we came to the conclusion that we did. And so that's, that's pretty much it at this point.
Thank you, Debbie. Does council have any questions for Debbie about human services? No, nobody's raising their hand, Debbie, so thank you very much for a great report. And pass on our thanks to the Human Services Commission for all that they do.
Certainly will. Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, Debbie. Have a good evening. We do not have a Parks and Recreation Commission update. They did not meet last month. And Planning Commission, Jonathan, welcome. There you are. Welcome, Jonathan.
Good evening, council members. I hope you're having a wonderful day and that you get out of here pretty quickly so that you can enjoy the rest of it.
Thank you.
I'd like to say it's been, it's a pleasure to talk to you again. I've been away for a bit. And I was, I'm very pleased that Murray Williams and David Cobb were able to step up and take care of things while I was away. During our last meeting, we talked specifically about changes, potential changes to the form-based code, the infill exemption and the multifamily property tax exemption. We were supposed to have a public hearing, but there was a snafu. We did not take any action on those. We will take action on those probably following our, our public hearing on July 15. My understanding is this material needs to come to the city council for the first city council meeting in August. I don't have anything else. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Jonathan. Does anyone have questions for Jonathan about planning commission? I don't see anybody raise their hand. Jonathan, thank you very much for coming tonight. And please pass on our thanks to each of the commissioners for all the work they do.
I will do so. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Jonathan. You too. And with that, Youth Council, I do not see anybody from the Youth Council here. So we will move into our first item of new business. And that is consider an appointment to the Youth Council. Does council wish to take any action tonight?
I move to nominate Geraldine Garcia for position number eight on the Youth Council.
Okay, it's been moved by Beth and seconded by, I believe it was Jennifer or was it Christina?
It was both. Give it to Christina, please.
Okay, so it's moved by Beth and seconded by Christina to appoint Geraldine Garcia to fill position number eight on the Youth Council with a term expiring June 30, 2023, the last day of the month of the graduation from high school. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I was, I mean, it's clear to me that she's interested in giving to her community and being involved. And that's been, you know, super fantastic. And I was also intrigued by her observations about POC being a potential opportunity. And so how to help make that, raise inclusivity and address those potential issues. I think that's fantastic to have a, have that new perspective, a new resident to the community, have that perspective on the, on the Youth Council.
Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Not only do I agree with everything Beth said, but I, I do feel like she was very present. She's definitely aware. She's only been here since, as she said, since the pandemic started. So we'll say a year, maybe 15 months. But her willingness to get involved and she kept saying she just wants to help people, which we could use more of in every city. I really liked her attitude and I think she would be a very great asset to our Youth Council.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Geraldine Garcia to fill position number eight on the Youth Council with a term expiring June 30, 2023, the last day of the month of the graduation from high school. I'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to appoint Geraldine Garcia to fill position number eight. Thank you all. Next up is new business item number two. It's the Public Records Act training related to text messages and personal devices. And I will turn this over to our city attorney, Mr. Orthman. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, City Council. Can you see the screen that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. As Mayor Wagner indicated, I'm Mark Orthman. I'm the city attorney for Covington. And I'm here tonight at council's request to give a brief training on text messages and personal devices and how those interplay with the Public Records Act. Basically, jumping into this and not to spend too much time on a beautiful sunny evening, but I'm going to go over a couple of major topics here. Very basically, you are all aware that what the Public Records Act is. We're going to go through just briefly what are public records because that's germane to whether text messages constitute public records, personal devices, and whether those can hold public records at different points. Can text messages be considered public records? Spoiler alert, text messages can indeed be considered public records. Does every public record need to be saved? And really, what are the PRA options for text messages both now and moving forward? So, jumping right in, the Public Records Act was established in the 70s and it's really a strongly worded mandate that is all about transparency of government business. It's saying that as a government, we need to be open to the public and provide records so the public can know what's going on, what the conduct of the government is and what's happening. Public Records Act applies to all cities, government agencies, and it's really about a presumption that the records that are created by both officials and employees are open for public inspection and disclosure. Now, the records of information can only be withheld if a statutory exemption applies. And I'm not going to get into the exemptions. There's a long list of them. But what you really need to know is that those exemptions are narrowly construed. And whenever one is, is put forth as a city for a reason not giving, not to disclose a record, the courts will analyze that and will take a very, take a tough look at it to see if it does indeed qualify. And of course, the reason why this is such an important topic, in addition to making sure that that the public has full knowledge of what the government is doing, but also from the government's side, failure to disclose non-exempt public records can result in daily penalties, attorney's fees, and costs. So there is a significant hammer that's involved here if the city does not comply with the Public Records Act. So getting into what a public record is, and it's important, this comes directly from the statute and it's any writing containing information relating to the conduct of government or the performance of any governmental proprietary function, prepared, owned, used, or retained by any state or local agency, regardless of physical form or characteristics. So that's a lot of words. And what that all means is what I'm going to do now is break it into these individual points to give a brief overview of what this, what this really looks like. So when we're talking about a writing, it includes virtually any record handwriting notes, text messages, sound recordings, videos, communications, emails, social media posts, really any combination, anything that we're producing can really be considered a writing. So almost anything that an official is making or an employee is creating, it's almost always going to satisfy this part of what a public record is. It's really, if you can see it or you can hear it, probably going to be a public record. And so one of the important points that I will come back to later is that the form of the record, what, what the form it's in, whether it's stored on your hard drive or whether it's stored in the cloud or whether it's on a public device or on your personal cell phone, it doesn't matter. So if it's a public record, it's a public record. And what, what, if it's, if it is a writing and most records will constitute that, it gets into what is the conduct of government or the performance of any governmental proprietary function of the city. So again, that's a lot of words to say, this is a pretty wide net and it's broadly construed because if it contains any information referring to impacts, actions, processes, functions of government, you can see just on its face, that language is pretty broad. And the courts generally construe if you're creating records as a government employee or as an elected official. And you're talking about city business, it's probably going to meet this test. It doesn't always, but usually this test is going to be satisfied. So, and what the courts have also said is it doesn't have to directly relate. It can also be an indirect relation to what's to the conduct of government. To be clear, though, personal communications that are not work-related are not public records and will never need to be disclosed in response to a public records request. If, if a council member texts another one and says, "Happy birthday", I hope you're having a great day, that has nothing to do with the conduct of government business and does not relate in any way to the performance of a governmental proprietary function of the city. Pure personal communications are not public records and are not subject to disclosure. So where we're really getting into the meat of this is this third aspect, which is records prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city. So when something is made by the city, it's considered a public record when we have it, when we use it in the course of our business, or we're holding on to it. Generally, those are going to be public records. But what the courts look at very, what they really focus on here for when we're talking about text messages and personal devices is whether that record was prepared by an official, official or employee in the scope of their employment. And the courts equate scope of employment to a city council person acting in their official capacity. So if you're acting as a city council member, doing something, communicating with a constituent, communicating with each other as a council member, that qualifies as scope of employment. And the courts look at this and for text messages and the case law is very clear that they, the courts have employed a scope of employment test. It's three parts. Does the position require it? Do you have to do it as part of your job as a city council member? Did the city direct it? Were you given a direction from, from the city manager or someone else to create that record? And the third and most fungible and difficult is, does it further the city's interests? And that's the hard one because the courts will look very closely at whether a record created furthers the city's interests. So for many records, does the position require it? Maybe. Did the city direct it? It's going to be hard for the city to truly direct a council member to do many things because council members are elected officials and are answerable to the people. But does it further the city's interests? A lot of that gets into discussing whether you're trying to do something that is going to be good and beneficial for the city or taking action on behalf of the city. Because what the courts look at as part of the scope of employment is whether you're acting in your official capacity. So if you're saying, "I'm doing this in my role as a city council member", it's likely going to be conducting public business that will constitute furthering the city's interests and therefore it'll be a public record. Now, the courts have sometimes found that purely informational social media posts may not meet the standard, but I must strongly caution what you do and do not post because each and every record will be individually evaluated by the courts of whether it does in fact constitute a public record. And I'll come back to this briefly. I have a bonus slide on social media posts for you a little bit later. So as we're looking at this, this is really important and this has come up in the past decade that our personal device is subject to search and disclosure. The courts unanimously in every case have found that if you are using a personal device for government business and you're creating, storing, maintaining, or receiving public records, then those public records are in fact subject to disclosure. It doesn't matter if it's a home computer, a phone, tablet, or even a non-agency account, your files, your hard drive. Those can all contain public records. So it doesn't matter whether it's public or private. The nature of the device used is not what's determinative. It's whether it meets that, that test of writing about the conduct of government and writing in the context of government meeting that scope of employment test, whether it's used, owned, or retained by the city. So employees and officials who are using personal devices to conduct city business really must obtain, segregate, and produce responsive public records to the city on all their personal accounts, files, and vices when a public records request comes in. So what the courts have told us, though, is we're not going, as a city, going to say, "Council member, give us your personal phone and let us go through it." It's ultimately going to be on each council member to submit an affidavit to the city swearing under penalty of perjury that they searched their personal device or whatever was being requested. They looked for the records that were responsive and turned them all over to the city or they didn't have any. So that's up, so it's going to be a rare occasion that the city would ever ask for a personal device. Sometimes it might be easier for the city to work on something, but for the most part, you don't want to have an intermingling between a, the government getting involved in, on your personal devices and your photos of your family and all those kinds of things. So that's generally how that would play out in practice. Public records request comes in for council members' communications. And then we, the city, as a staff, will ask for those communications. Those will be provided and then an affidavit will be requested from the council member saying that, yes, they did indeed turn those over. So I know I spoiled the big reveal here, but of course, text messages can be considered public records. It doesn't matter if they're sent or received by an employee or an official in their official capacity, they're likely going to be public records of the city. And that's where we get back into that scope of employment test to determine whether a text message is a public record. And again, if the job requires it and whether the city directed it aren't really where this is going to, where the rubber's going to hit the road, it's going to be whether it furthers the city interests. it's going to be whether it furthers the city interests. And to determine that, they're always looking, the courts will always look at whether it's done in their official capacity and whether you're conducting public business. And unfortunately, I can't give you a bright line rule or some black and white explanation of what will constitute a public record under this test because it's ultimately going to come down to a court reviewing each record and making that determination. And I, that's, and, that's not satisfying, but at the same time, it's, it, that, that's one of the reasons that cuts strongly in favor of not conducting personal business on the, or, excuse me, government business on your personal phone. Because then there is, then, then you'd never have to face this question and try to make this determination or city staff helping you to make that determination. So the courts will focus on whether it furthers the city's interests. And as I said earlier, personal messages, again, birthday greetings, personal inquiries, those are never going to be considered public records and subject to disclosure. Now, what's important also about this, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about, um, some of these issues with what constitutes uh, the scope of employment test and that third prong of furthering the city's interests. But, um, with regards to text messages specifically, does every public record need to be saved? No, they don't, because there's an entire, um, retention schedule that discusses what must and must not be saved, and really comes down to substantive versus transitory records. And to be entirely clear here, not very many records are going to be able to be deleted. Um, so substantive records are those that must be retained according to the content and function of the message. These are policies, contracting, formal correspondence, outcomes, actions, personnel-related information, all of those are very substantive. Now, the difference, and those must all be retained according to very set, retain, set, and specific retention schedules. And I'll show on a slide in the, coming up here in a couple minutes, that for communications, those substantive communications need to be retained by the city for two years and then transferred to the state archivist for selective, uh, for a selective determination of whether they're going to be permanently retained. Now, and to give you a little bit of, uh, good news, transitory records do not need to be maintained, retained, and can be deleted. And so what's a transitory record? So I gave a list of what constitutes a transitory record on, in the memo that I attached that was in the packet. And really, these transitory records are informal notices of meetings, directions, scheduling, information. I'll be late. Hey, I just sent you an email. Please call me. I said, how do I get to this meeting site? What's the address? I'm available on Tuesday for a meeting. Can we chat tomorrow on the phone? Those are the kinds of text messages and any other message, notes or otherwise, that would be transitory and can be deleted. However, please be aware that if a public records request comes in and you have not deleted a text message that constitutes one of these informal notices, one of these transitory records, then those still need to be turned over to the city if they, if they are in fact a public record in response to a request. So if they're, again, if they're further in the city's interests, the job requires it, the city directs it, if it's related to the conduct of government, and of course, it was going, it's going to be, be a writing. So council communications, emails, text message, social networking posts and comments must be saved unless they're transitory. And this is just one slide or one page of the several, um, I think, I can't remember how many pages, it's, uh, it's over a hundred pages of descriptions of records and how long they must be saved. And I pulled this one up specifically because it's talking about internal and external communications to or from elected officials. And it talks about the, the, as I said earlier, they need to be retained for two years after the communication is received or provided, and then transferred to the Washington State Archives for appraisal and selective retention. So this is just one example of retention schedule that applies to records. Now, as I said earlier, my bonus slide here is getting into social media posts because, like we've discussed in the past, social media posts made by a public employee in that person's official capacity are public records of the city. Now, the court will apply that same scope of employment test to determine, to determine whether a social media post is in fact a public record. And again, they look at job requiring it, city directed it, but really, the one that they're going to focus on is whether it furthers the city's interests. And this is hard because the court, in a recent case, found that even if an informational, some informational posts don't constitute public records because they don't meet the scope of employment test because they weren't furthering the city's interests. For example, there was a city council person who had a campaign site, and they posted a whole variety of things that were writings and related to the conduct of government, but the court ultimately found that they were not public records because the Facebook page was not associated with the city. It was not the council member acting within her official capacity as a city council member. They were not, this, the website or the Facebook page was not characterized enough as an official city council member page and was instead used to provide information to council member supporters. It was important here because the post did not contain specific details but the council members work as a city council member and were not about the city council's discussions, decisions, or other actions. And the court said that while this may have had some minimal furthering of the city's interests, it wasn't enough to meet the requirement to make it a public record. And this is where I think it's frustrating for employees, city council members, staff, and everyone that works on these issues because one court could find that something is a public record of whether it furthers the city's interests and another could not. So this is one of those, and again, one of those reasons why I caution against posting things related to the conduct of government because at the end of the day, we're going to come down to this last element of the, of a test. And the court, if it, if a request is made and a, and a certain record isn't turned over, it'll be in the hands of the court to make that determination of whether it in fact furthers the city's interests, which is frustrating and hard to do, but that's why they're, why, why the city would like to rely on policies to govern these and keep both your privacy intact and make sure that you don't have to go through these individualized, uh, determinations for records. So looking at what, going back to text messages, um, looking at the Public Records Act options for, for this form of communication, the best practice is not to text on personal devices for city business. And that's simply getting back to that retention, requiring council members to make determinations between transitory and substantive records, and keep those for the required amount of time, transfer them to the city for retention purposes, and disclose them if a public records request comes in that is asking for those records, and those records are responsive to that request. And so that's for personal devices, and that's one of the reasons why we're going to, the other city staff is going to be coming back with a proposal for city council members to have public devices. So you can truly segregate those two, uh, those two realms, your work for the public and your personal private affairs. Now, looking at the other options, cities have taken a, a wide variety of stances on this. They allow texting allowed, but with proper retention practices such as work, reminding everyone work-related text messages are subject to public disclosure. They must be kept and retained and according to the law, and must be turned over to the city if a request comes in for them. Um, and other cities have taken the tactic of saying texting is allowed, but only of those transitory note, only of those transitory records that we discussed, that I discussed earlier. And those are those informal notices, scheduling, nothing that's policy-related, related to decisions or actions of the city council. And again, those must be disclosed if they're not deleted prior to, uh, a request coming in. And others take a, in, another, uh, tactic, which is texting is, is banned, but there are very specific council-approved exceptions set forth in a policy. And that's, that's tough to, uh, to police and that's tough to enforce. But there, that's just basically saying there are a couple of, uh, set options that can be used by either, uh, the employees or council for texting, such as, like, in an emergency, that, that texting would not be banned if something needed to happen and speaking wasn't possible. So at this point, I covered a lot of ground very quickly here, but I would be happy to answer any questions from council and get into anything that you would like to discuss about this.
Does council have any questions for Mark? Jennifer?
Hi, Mark. Thank you. Um, if, you're probably going to get lost with these hypotheticals. Um, if I get a text, um, that I essentially really need to, to, to go to Regan and ask about it, and I assume he has a city phone and therefore everything on his city phone is, is properly archived, I guess, you know, for lack of a better word. Do I just take a screenshot of that and text it to him and say, you know, email me or something? I mean, what's best practice if I get a text from someone, or do I just say I can't respond via text? Email me?
Um, so I think you did a couple of, you have a couple of different things there. If you're texting with Regan, unfortunately, the courts just came down and said that if your, uh, communication is requested, even if there are duplicates, you still need to search for those and respond. So even if it's on your phone, that still needs to be disclosed. Um, as far as doing a screenshot, again, these are, that's one possible way that I've seen this done is saying, here are the records, and go through and create a screenshot for every single one, work with the IT department, and the email, text that to, uh, the city employee or, um, compile it onto a file on a public device and email it to yourself. Unfortunately, that also creates another public record, so there aren't a lot of really good ways to, um, to, to gather this information unless you take your device in, and this is the way I've seen it most effectively done, go to IT and say, here are the files, here are the records that I need to have pulled off my phone, and then IT can help do that. Now, I'm speaking a little out of turn here for Mason because this may be beyond our capabilities, but that's how I've seen other jurisdictions do it, is I want council members, all of council members' text messages, they bring it into city staff and pull the text messages off the phone itself and don't touch any of the personal records that are included on there.
But that's if there's a public records request. I mean, I personally would like to avoid ever having to do that, so on an ongoing basis, live, you know, because like I work in a regulatory environment during the day and everything we do gets blind copied to this, this box. And it's all stored there for, you know, a hundred years. Um, but is there something I can be doing on a live basis and not like having to wait for a public records request and then go through my phone for god knows what? I'm not going to necessarily remember that so-and-so from FIRE texted me with a question that, you know, I had to go to Regan with.
And I, I think you're, you're highlighting the exact issue that's, that's the problem here is when a request comes in, whether you remember it or not, it's going to require significant work from each council member to go through all of their records, whether it's files, whether it's text messages, and perform those searches and be able to swear under penalty of perjury that you used, did X, Y, and Z, you put in this search term, you looked in these folders, you looked on this device, and you went through all these steps to find the responsive records. It's not easy, but as far as in doing something on an ongoing basis, it would require you to go through your phone on whatever period of time is that you determine is, uh, is adequate or sufficient, go through it and gather all of your public records and turn them over to the city in batches, even if they haven't been requested specifically.
But let me address one issue that I think Jennifer also, um, discussed. So Jennifer, even if you, uh, get a text message from someone that's related to city business and then you, let's say you screenshot it and email it to yourself, so it's saved on the city server, that's still insufficient, as I understand it, Mark can confirm this, you'd still need to go through your device to, um, discover that in a public records request.
Yes, that, that's the best practice because if, what, because what also comes with this are metadata. And while we don't have to disclose metadata for every single issue, every single thing that comes up, if it is requested, then we have to give them the source file to the extent that we can. And that's where we, that's where it's difficult with something like a text message and a screenshot. So there are a lot of variables at play and trying, and that's why doing government business on a personal phone creates a few more of these layers and hurdles that council members potentially need to jump through in response to a public records request.
Okay, and one more question. In that train, it looked like we can just delete stuff and then it's just gone? And we don't have to worry about digging for it?
Though, in the very limited circumstances that it's a transitory record and has nothing to do with policy, actions, or otherwise, basically, the only things that can, that you can delete as, that are public records are those things that are, I'm going to be late for the meeting.
Okay.
It's not going to be, I'm going to be late for the meeting and I want to discuss the planning commission when I get there. That's a public record that's substantive and must be retained. Now, if you just, if you're just talking about scheduling, hey, I, I'm available on this date, that's fine, but again, if you say, I'm available on this date and I think we should appoint X, Y, and Z to the youth commission, then that's going to be a public record. So it's, while you can delete these transitory records, I, I'd be, uh, I recommend caution when doing so because you have to look at each and every single one of them to make sure that it is transitory before you delete it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Beth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so is it, do you have any examples of cities that, uh, or their, their code where they have an emergency, um, clause in there? I mean, I'm trying to think of when that would even probably be needed. And most of us get emailed if there's an emergency situation and, you know, I guess the only thing would be if you were in the middle of a meeting and it was remote and you couldn't get internet connection, but you could text something. I don't know if that would even really be a thing.
So, so if, if this is on a personal device?
Correct, on a personal device.
On a personal device, there are a lot of different ways it could, could potentially be set out. Um, that could be a specific exception to a no texting policy. But again, that would, unless it's a transitory in nature, it, it's likely going to be a public record subject to disclosure. And that's kind of what, um, what we want to avoid in a best practice is the creation and retention of those public records on private devices. Because all of the, what I hear council members have raised on both social, about social media and all public records is this sounds, this is very difficult for us to do on our personal devices, and that's absolutely true. And there are, and I can provide these for you later, but there are definitely examples that cities have, that have emergency clauses or other examples of how records can be, how you can text and use your personal devices. But again, best practice is just to never do it, and if you're going to conduct government business, to do it on a government device.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Does any other council members have a question for Mark? Well, Mark, thank you very much. Um, I went through the public records training again today, which is only an hour and a half training, so it's very informative. And Mark, you touched on a lot of the great high points, so thank you for that training and bringing it forward, and we look forward to the next update on devices coming in July, I believe, sometime.
I believe that's correct.
Is there anything you need from us tonight, Mark?
No, this was just in a response to the council members wanting to have, uh, further training on this and to have a discussion. So thank you very much for taking the time to let me walk through this with you. I understand the difficulty and the frustration that goes along with how these records are required to be retained and how they're required to be disclosed. I empathize with you completely. It's, it's a very difficult situation. And I appreciate your willingness to work on this and to consider policies that, um, that can be put in place to both protect your privacy, but also make sure that the records are transparent, open for the public to review, and also protect the city from liability in case a, there's a record that is not disclosed that should have been. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, and your training tonight was a lot easier than the other training I took, so thank you.
Happy to help.
All right, next up, eh, that concludes our new business for tonight. So looking at future agenda items on our, we have a joint session with the Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission on July 13th at six o'clock, and then looking at our council agenda, uh, we have several items on there, including possibly the park bench dedication, summit action, and then, uh, possibility of hearing about the city-issued cell phones. Um, this council have Does council have anything that they would like to bring forward for a future agenda item down the road? Seeing nobody bring anything up, we will move into council staff comments and I'm going to start with Andy. Welcome, Andy.
Hello, I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Andy. Ethan?
Hi, Council. Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Don? I don't see Don is.
Oh, Bob's here in place of Don tonight.
Oh, Bob.
Thank you. I think my microphone or my camera tipped off my desk. Uh, I just wanted to point out that we were a little surprised that Washstop was doing some in lane work this morning on five sixteen. Uh, they contacted us about nine thirty, said they're going to be doing some inland work. Over the next two weeks, day and night. So a little surprise to us, but wanted to pass that on. It is not our construction project. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Ryan?
Uh, nothing for me this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ryan. Casey?
Good evening. I just wanted to give a quick little update on the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I just wanted to let you know that during the last council meeting, we spoke about the letter that we had got gotten from the Office of Financial Management. That was a super quick turnaround. We only had a week to let them know if we wanted the funds or not. And I wanted to let you know that we got that letter submitted last Friday, so that made the deadline. And that means that we should be receiving our funds potentially by the end of the month or at the beginning of July. And you'll see a couple of things coming for you guys on the next agenda. One will be establishing a new fund structure. So I have a place to put that money and keep track of it. And just a couple of other things that we're still waiting on the interim final rule to actually be finalized. They're still taking some comments on that. So we won't see any final ruling until after July sixteenth, when that should be. Finished up for comment. So I just wanted to let you know what what's going on right now and the money is coming, but just haven't gotten it yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the flag retirement event that the council asked staff to coordinate at CCP as requested. By the Rotary Club a couple of weeks ago. Uh, staff has been looking into a type of event like that. However, we've learned that the burning of the material that the flags are made of. Is actually not permitted by the the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority and the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. Because of the material that's in the flags can be toxic. Older flags that are not made of the newer material would be okay, but almost all of the new flags would not be allowed. Um, as a result, I put a planning, I put the planning for this event on hold until I could discuss it with you. So there may be a few older flags. Out there that people need to retire that they may be able to bring to this event. But for the most part, we suspect they may be the ones that that were not allowed to burn inside of King County. So if we wanted to proceed with this, it will obviously take staff time. We'll need to coordinate with the with the Regional Fire Authority. And we're unsure as staff, how many flags may be floating out there that need to be retired that would be allowed and we need to ensure compliance. Of those flags. So I wanted to bring this to you tonight, see how you would like us to proceed as it's something that you originally requested.
Council have any comments? Beth?
Yeah, I was just wondering if if it would be an issue to modify it. So that it isn't a burning, there wouldn't be burning involved, but if people had old battered tattered flags they wanted to turn in. You know, still make it a ceremonial sort of situation even and then. I'm not sure what would happen to them after that if they can't get burned or if there's a certain place they have to go to be disposed of.
I think they can be turned into Tohoma National Cemetery. Is that right, Ethan?
Yeah, I believe Tohoma National Cemetery has a flag retirement program. They actually bury them. They don't burn them. Um, but I don't believe it's a public event, but if people did have flags they wanted to retire, I would suggest reaching out to them.
Oh, okay. I was thinking of making it the retirement ceremony at the in lieu of the. So the the event would still be at the park. It would just be. And it would be a public thing for people to gather and do their thing, but then the flags would go to wherever they to Tohoma, I suppose.
I I think that could be an option. If it's just a kind of a drop off kind of thing, I don't know that the city would necessarily need to be involved in that. That's probably something. Rotary could could do on their own because of the nature of of the fire and whatnot at CCP. It was best that the city sponsor that, but that's up to the council.
Okay.
Thanks, Beth. Joe?
Uh, I would be okay with us putting a putting kind of a hold on it to make sure we get all the details correct, making sure we're doing everything by the book. Because I hate to say, as much as I'm for the retirement ceremony, the last thing I want is the fire department and. To come by and just hose it all down while they're in the middle of trying to do this. So. Uh, as you can tell, I think my dog agrees with me if you all heard that. But. So I would say let's let's put a hold on it till we get all the information. Just just for that fact of the last thing we want is to be trying to do something correctly. But in the end, still having the fire department show up telling us we've done it all wrong. So.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? I will be meeting with Jonathan. I know he's in the audience. So when we come up to public comment. Let him speak, but I will be meeting with Jonathan tomorrow to further discuss this as well. Um, so we can bring that back in the future. Item, but I do like Beth's idea of having a ceremony where flags are just turned in. And have it as a Rotary event and the city doesn't need to get involved. So. Um, that is, I think that's a good possibility.
And and we could, of course, help in in any way.
Yeah.
You know.
Just can't have the burning.
Yeah.
The Puget Sound Clean Air Agency can be very restrictive on a lot of things. Um, anything else, Reagan?
No, so I I think just to confirm at this point, staff is holding off. I think that's what I'm getting from council.
Is that what council consensus is until we get more information?
But by more information, what what do you mean?
Um, when I get more information from Rotary.
Oh, oh, you. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Yeah, then I just wanted to remind council that July sixth, we plan to reopen City Hall after being closed for some time. So that'll be good. It's starting to have a lot more life in there and we're. So things are going well and we're prepared for that. We have a reopening plan. Uh, that we've been working on, Noreen and the leadership team. So we're ready to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Reagan. Mark?
There is no executive session tonight and I don't have anything else to add.
Thanks, Mark. Krista?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thanks, Krista. Jared?
Uh, nothing for me tonight.
Thanks, Jared. Sean? I didn't. I didn't hear you. You're on mute, Sean.
I I don't have anything either. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Christina?
I'm good tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Jennifer?
I had a quick question. With all the seniors that were on youth council. How many current youth council members do we have? Since they all just graduated Friday and Saturday?
Uh, we'll have to follow up with that. I don't have the count on on my head, so.
Yeah, I feel like all but one or two were.
I'm looking it up right now.
Yeah, it was.
We we will have. Three plus the one that we just appointed tonight.
Okay, so.
Four, it looks like.
So recruit, recruit.
Hopefully, heavy recruitment is underway. I will. Yeah.
You know, it was difficult. A lot of our recruitment was done at school. And so this made recruiting and filling those seats pretty difficult.
Yeah, yeah, I I can get that. All right. Otherwise, that was all I have. Thanks for a very efficient meeting tonight.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Nothing for me tonight. You all have a great weekend and stay cool.
Thanks, Joe. Beth?
Um, yeah, just. Looking forward to the rest of the AWC conference. Had a great speaker today and. Took some sessions on public, public records and transportation funding options. So all fun stuff.
Thanks, Beth. Yeah, I've been going through the AWC training today and General Matidis, I believe, was a great speaker.
Madison, yeah.
Madison. Um, very good. And he definitely has the art of nonpartisanship down. He did very good with that. Uh, on the SCA board, we had a board meeting last week. We're moving forward and having discussions about what the new normal will be, which is also one of the AWC. Trainings later this week that I've signed up for. In our AWC business meeting is this Thursday, Beth, Reagan and I are representing the city for voting. And then I have an executive SCA meeting tomorrow. Just as a reminder, we won't be meeting until after the fourth. So the fourth of July, we do have a ban on fireworks in the city. Uh, which I noticed that quite a few people are already ignoring. But so I hope that you all have a very safe Fourth of July. And I hope that you all have a good weekend. We're supposed to have triple digit. Heat wave this weekend. Uh, with that, we will move into our second of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. And comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. I see Jonathan has his hand up. Jonathan, welcome. And you were on mute, sir.
Good evening.
Hi, Jonathan.
I do actually have more information about the flag retirement. There are a number of options that do not require burning and I'm pursuing all of those. Uh, one of them is, of course, the Tohoma option. I need to have a conversation with Tom Yokes about that. And I'll be doing that this week. The other option is that those flags made of non. Natural materials can actually be taken to transfer stations in King County. By a King County resident and they will get retired honorably and then they will live on as future American flags through recycling. So there are a number of options at our disposal. I'm still investigating further. Uh, certainly. Certainly, we don't have to burn the non-natural flags.
Perfect. Thanks, Jonathan. Uh, pardon? Anything else?
If you have more questions, I'll be glad to add to it, address them.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, Jeff Powell? Welcome. Um, you disappeared. There you are.
Hello.
Hi, Jeff.
City Council. Hello. Uh. My dogs would are requesting we can get a dog park in Covington if we can. If that's possible.
That is something that we can look at. We don't have anything on our plan at this time.
Uh, I was thinking maybe like by the old Covington Elementary School.
Okay, that's something that we can look at down the road. Yes.
Uh, what steps would I need to do to start it, I guess?
Reagan?
Ethan, do you want to address the issue of dog parks? It's something that that we've discussed quite a bit and would would like to add to our portfolio of of parks and. I'll let Ethan, our Parks and Rec Director, address that.
Yeah. Without going into it too much, you know. Uh, I think there is increasing demand and desire for dog parks to be part of our park system. And really it comes down to funding, you know, there needs to be a piece of land and there needs to be and it needs to be suitable for it. And then there is infrastructure that's needed for some of these dog parks. So. But maybe Jeff could reach out to me and I can follow up with him afterwards and kind of share a little bit more about the. Parks plans that we have.
Well, we got plenty of land, it looks like.
Well, we have to.
So Jeff, what you can do is reach out to Ethan. His contact information is on the website. And just reach out to him and he can have a further discussion with you about it through our parks. He is our Parks Director.
Okay.
Any other questions, Jeff?
Uh. That's what I want to get, trying to get the ball rolling.
Okay, that would be the right direction to get going on.
You know, soon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate you showing up tonight. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience?
Bye.
You bet. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody else raise their hand, we do not have a executive session tonight. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh six. You all have a very good evening and a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.